Call special meeting of City of Vernon on June 9, 2022 to order.
Gracious heaven and Father, we thank you for this, David. Thank you for this opportunity to be here. Hope we just ask you to have your hand upon us as we make decisions for the city and have your hand upon everything that we say or we do in your name we pray.
Amen. I pledge the Constitution and the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one, motion to approve purchasing a polymer mixer and flow meter for $6,185.90.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Motion carried. Number two, motion to approve paying Brunson, Wilkson, Baden and Associates an amount of $18,385.90 for fiscal year 2020 audit. Do I have a motion? Second.
Aye.
Second. Discussion. I did get in touch with the company Brunson and they will allow us to make payments. I gave you each a paper. I got this today from them. We remixed the first installment and then 11 monthly installments. And the interest rate is 7.95%. 7.95%. If we want to do that instead of... You might have a thing, so...
Was this something that we already talked about and had approval?
No. We hired the auditing firm. They did the audit. It was sent, the bill was sent in January to come on page. When the new clerk reached out to them about this year's audit, they sent a second invoice that had not been paid previously. So we have budgeted money to pay the auditors like we do every year. So I don't know that amount off the top of my head, but this was, this is the second invoice. This was due... Where you can keep this at, you know, when it was sent and how long ago. So we can either pay the entire amount now or make payments on what, what is the capitalization?
First of all, let me make sure that we got this in the budget and that this amount of $10,000 is available. If it already budgeted?
Why not go ahead and pay it?
They still haven't gotten it.
I reckon well.
I know, but up above our bank statement.
Did this come out of general fund?
Yeah, more than likely.
I'm not sure how it's flown along. Yeah, yeah. I don't really...
I don't remember how it came in.
I don't know if it was getting out of general fund or if it was getting out of...
It would just be something off your head, though.
I believe it would... I got news for y'all. It's been done. We're gonna pay it. We just need to figure out which way we're gonna pay. And we, here's the deal. The new auditing firm that we have, this, this has got to be cleared up before they take on which they're, they're already...
They're already here, right?
They're already here.
I think you should just go ahead and pay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Motion to approve Municipal Engineering Services Inc. as the engineer for the CCBG grant number 22DB-OP-02-77-02N13. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
That money's paid out of your, your...
Grant. All in...
It's like a progression payment, it's not paid out of the one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Number four, motion to approve Brad Falk Enterprises Inc. as the administrator for the CCBG grant number 22DB-OP-02-77-02N13. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Discussion. All in favor?
That one paid the same way.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. New business. I've taken from Jimmy Cook regarding the purposes.
Well, let's get the polymer mixture out of the way. Y'all got it squared on that?
We, we, that was number one. That's, that's been approved.
Oh, it has?
Yeah. We just approved the $6,185.90.
Oh, I know you had used to it.
Sorry.
You would ask for more?
A lot of this we can do in-house, but starting July, I told y'all, we got a new permit and it's going to take effect in July. More samples, different kinds of samples that I need a few things for the plant to be fixed. Love to have it fixed for July. And that's the timers on the plant. I'm being... I'm just picking out what absolutely has to be done. Most of this that I'm, that I got, and y'all have lists of this. I just didn't have time to make one. It's got to be done soon, but I mean immediately is where I'm trying to pull it off.
Jimmy, what is a total on that list that you have? I know that there's somewhere, I think it's somewhere around $80,000.
Probably a little more than that.
That's not including labor on getting things done? I'm talking about parts themselves.
Well, it's easier for me to take it one at a time. I, we, I just got pricing for airbrush stuff for plants. I mean, I'm just, that's why I didn't hear you do the first... I hadn't even had time to sort that again. I got pricing for it.
The reason that I was saying that, because I went through that list and I, and I added everything that it was close to. About around $78,000 is what I think it averages.
And which list?
That list that you give us the other day.
I didn't have pricing on some of it.
Okay. But what you did have a price for.
Okay.
If you communicate, you just divide that by 12. I mean, you're going to average out about $55,000 in work to be able to get that fixed.
$55,000?
$5,500, I'm sorry, Jimmy. I'm over here. $5,500 at the minimum. $55. At the max, it was around, you could spend about $80. We need to look at a budget and see where the, where we're standing right now with the water and sewer and see if that's in some of the range of where, while we can spend a month to get this fixed. And if well months, you could have to take care of a lot of it.
What do you got to have?
What I got to have right now. Let's just take wastewater start with, okay? I got to have them timers. The timers, now what pricing fix will give you, I'm sure doesn't include a... Labor. You're looking at $4,000 for two timers. They have quoted it as needing two timers each. And I believe it's only one timer. So that could be cut in half, possibly. I mean, I'd say Dale just sent me this, I'd walk into the door. So, um... I think somebody's confused. In reality, I think it would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,000 for a timer. It's telling me $5,000, below $5,000. But I'm telling you, I think it's around $3,000.
And that's just for the timers, not the electrical work and stuff like that?
No, it's not that. That's just, somebody's got to put the timers in and we'll have to pay that company to come up here and do it. They're just in physical, right? The way they quoted this is just hard. The valve that I was talking about, the RAS valve, me and Jason were able to get it working. Now, is it going to keep working? I don't know. But it appears that they're around $1,000 a piece. So that wouldn't be something that I would suggest you're spending right now. The inflow pumps need to be pulled and repaired. I don't think they need to be replaced right now. But there's an issue there with too many pumps. And to me, that's a...
Can Jason help or will he boot them up?
Nah, he'll pull. I mean, I ain't gonna promise it's going to be the easiest thing, but it can be done.
You going down there tomorrow evening?
I'm off tomorrow, but yeah, I can make arrangements.
Nah, we're doing Monday.
I'm off Monday. The rest of these, like the dryer, I'm assuming that's going to be a super fix. The small piping is a super fix, not a lot of money involved, I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Huh?
I was going to say simple. Don't want me to say that?
Well, I'm just telling you it can be done in half.
I say it.
I think once Jason gets through with that report, he's got this due tonight, we're just going to designate so much time to get this stuff fixed. We're going to have to make him understand that that's got to be done.
Like the lighting?
Okay.
I mean, I wouldn't worry about that right now. I think you're going to have a little bit of cost for putting that other blower back online, but I think it's going to be a minimal cost. I'm going to just throw it out there for nothing wrong with the motor and they just have to buy shims and all, probably less than $200. Repairing the skimmers, I'm going to say less than $100. You need a fan for the chlorine room, that's $400. Now, as far as repairing them inflow pumps, I can give you something, but I mean, it would just get stabbed in the dark. I'm going to say $3,500 a piece if they need rebuilding. But I have no idea. Maybe them pellet cal off one of my, I don't know. Y'all have already approved buying an air compressor, need to get that fixed. Repairing the other air compressor electrical, probably no money hard. I wouldn't even buy the life rings right now. Repacking the pumps is very cheap, probably less than $10. I wouldn't worry about the front gate. Cleaning the diffusers, that's in-house, that's just y'all doing it. I would pay some other service generator. I have no idea what that costs. I'm going to pay probably less than $1,000.
Y'all know one sewer plant?
It's the only one.
That's the only one you, we got to service right now?
Well, changing the bad air switches, I think Jason has them. And he knows how to change them. Now, I want to jump into two other things. The spray filling only has one pump. I told y'all about the controls, we only have controls, but you only have one pump. I did get a price for a new motor, but that don't include the pump. And I'll be honest with you, I believe our pump's going to have to be pulled and repaired, at least gone through. It's been sitting in that water for years. So I'm sure for us to go. I personally wouldn't even hold with it unless I pulled $1,000, maybe somebody. But I understand if that pump goes out, one pump, it's going to be a terrible, terrible mess. And then, um...
Who are you recommending to do this?
A, AG and Pemell City. They can do the motor, they can do the pump, I believe. And they have it equipped with the drive up here.
Do we need the controls?
Right now, no. I mean...
Will they install?
I would, I would go out there and alternate them manually, weekly, if you got the other one fixed. And that's something, because the control pump will be cheap, I promise you. I mean, yeah. Very expensive.
What's the price on that you got?
I don't have pricing.
They'll give me one. It's, it's going to be around about $6,300.
For the controls?
No, not the controls. Okay.
For what?
Pump? Yeah, pump and all. Pull, pull and hat?
That's branded.
That's what?
That's branded.
Yeah.
I know I can beat that price on the motor.
Okay, but I, that's, yeah, I'm not arguing that, I'm not saying that's...
I'm going to say less than $10,000.
Is that clear, that's just for the motor?
No.
Pump and all?
No, that's taking the pump out and rebuilding it. I'm sure probably less than that, but I'm going to take it $1,000.
But is a pump worth rebuilding?
I'm sure.
Okay.
Man, you got to figure this on it. Not got that much time on it. And that may have been one of them that was rebuilt in the previous. I mean, you won't know until you actually got it taped it, but yeah, I would.
Bless you, Jim.
I mean, I just said we could replace the motor. We'd labor for $6,200. Whatever you want to do about your water wells, I'm looking at y'all. I suggested either replacing the motor at well three or something. And I did that right from that install.
What's that?
$7,179. And if you, the top of you got has a price of $6,400. Between me and the shop, we got confused and quoted the wrong motor. This is the right motor. And I can have it in about two, three days.
That's $7,179?
That includes, uh...
Here, you have that sheet?
That includes labor and that includes freight. Now, wait a minute. How much I pay you?
$71.79.
I got community quotes here. Oh. Yes.
That's the one you sent me, $71.79.
Yeah, pricing, three, four days delivery, pricing, freight, freight. And labor. Jason, Jason said he had meters to replace well one and two. That's just labor to do it, making it work. That's really the big ticket item, but you're going to have to get the communication fixed, as I want to tell you. Are we going to end the same way if we want to take it offline after all that work?
We need to get that sorted out first.
You need that sorted out before we purchase a motor or something?
No. I think it needs to be done in the next...
We still haven't established the two.
Or I don't need nobody. I, I mean, I have no idea. That's really out of my hands from that.
Karen, you not found anything?
Jason, I talked to him this afternoon. I don't think he's figured out anything.
Is there a way that we can get AT and T to come out? AT&amp;T to come out and take a look at it and establish it? Those lines, one of those lines is part of AT&amp;T?
One of them. The way I understand, one of them is...
Yeah, we had this discussion the other night.
But, uh... I just want to say establish which line is theirs and they look at it and say, okay, we, this will work. If we can't get it to work, again, find out from the, how much it's going to cost.
So you want to call AT&amp;T tomorrow? Let them come visit, make their line, they make it, they'll see the other.
Yeah, that's what we had to talk about in the last meeting.
I don't think that, I mean, this is a question you could ask when you brought up good things. I'm not sure if it's easy to set up. I mean, it's easy to set up. I've heard they're trying to get away from all that.
They are, they are. So what we will have to look at is that's can exist?
Can exist. Yeah, I think that, you know, in the, in the long term, y'all, y'all really need to look at that. I mean, I mean, most people don't even need that. I can't tell anybody that's a good thing.
The problem is that we've not upgraded our systems as the times move by. Then we won't have to upgrade sooner or later.
We sent a company up here to validate the equipment. I mean, they said equipment, if they can, you know, work it, that's fine. All equipment, we can get this up and running.
Okay, so if we can't find out who line that is and it's not working, then we're going to have to see about getting somebody else to come in and run it.
Somebody. AT&amp;T mine, but I don't, you know, I'm, I'm the sooner I'm here. They're trying to get away from that all of them. But, yeah, I still...
Who else would service, like, uh, here Verizon? Comcast? Any of those guys?
I swear I've heard the name.
Media?
No, it's not media, no, I don't think.
It's been a while, we kind of make use of it. Who was that? Andrew Lane. As far back as this, um, these lines have been here for a while.
I thought I knew the name of it and then questioned around and they want them lines down here.
All right, we'll call AT&amp;T. I reckon the question is, is going to be to the clerk, we need to kind of deep find out how much money we got in the... I know she probably... I'm not trying to put no spot here. They all know what our situation is. We just need to know already how much we got in the general fund and is there any way you can tell if it's split up into different accounts?
Karen, if you pull the budget that we approved, give us that line item, that way you'd be able to figure out if, what, what line item that we spoke about.
We had a, we had a copy.
And then if you need to reach out through the CPA, they won't be available until next week.
Well, in the meantime, you can pull.
Part of the problem with that is that we've noticed is that some of the line items that was posted are not posted correctly. So, and we discovered that some of the line items were... And some of the incoming money was just put into the general fund and not put into the line items.
Right.
Yes.
And that's, that's something we're going to have to correct anyways.
No, that's, that's, they've been working on that. That's what Lee has been doing.
He's been doing it for a while.
Our main accounts that he, that we've got the biggest issues with is our general fund and our water supply. The rest of them are fine.
Yeah, look, we're going to see what, what we got and what we just banned. I think Jimmy pretty much got it outlined what the, what the emergency is. We just need to find the money and get this stuff going.
And everything, I'm going to give you Mr. Karen, you can make y'all feel good. This is the most updated thing I got, it's got quotes in it. One thing that's coming, I'm not telling you how to do it right now, but I mean, we get DPD has been infected or anything, they're going to write something, I'm sure. We're going to change the coordinator of water wells, which is me. There's quotes in here for three different companies. I picked the one that was most reasonable and decent pump. I'm looking at about $2,600.
How much, how much?
$2,600. $2,600. And that included the spare pump and all the supply.
That's a lead weight, man. That's a lead weight of three.
No. Yeah, well, one and two are combined. They're considered one water plant, which is two wells. That's over in three pumps. Now, we have one on the shelf. But we are... The pumps we're using, the quality's just went down in them. They're not lasting more than four, five months. Longest, we see that lasts years. We're buying them continuously and they're costing about $400 or better. Probably fix that and buy another one, so... You save money if you can come up with the money and get a pump. It's got to be one thing. I've talked to people who have the pump, they're happy with everybody, but... But until then, we're going to be buying pumps continuously. We get well one and two up, you're probably going to do the same thing there.
Y'all need any good news?
The rest of this is pretty much...
Good news is we all realize where we're at. We're starting to, we're starting to solve a lot.
I just want y'all to understand what all is, need to fix.
Um, and how is that?
And there's a list in there that shows what all this is. We're only going to fire a speaker thirty minutes. And we're here longer than that. You know, we can't, we can't really do a lot of this. And we come in, we do our part. I give a lot of, you know, I come, I come down here when I'm not even on work.
You have that list in that?
I'm going to give that Karen to you, make it count. I should have done it, but I, I didn't have time to do it. But, um, you know, I'll continue to do that, but they're, you know, they're going to have to step up and do part of what we used to do. We each have here for our, because we do a lot of little maintenance and things like that. So it's better for us. We're here in about an hour and a half.
Do you have anything else?
One thing. I fucked up. Need to get the generator service for well three, $1,200, doesn't go anywhere. Appears like well one and two generator runs. Tested it myself.
This is the generator for...
Well three.
And needs to be serviced?
And it's, I'm sure it's going to need a battery. It's going to need something to start service. I'm hoping it's just a battery.
You have any idea what that may cost?
$500 for a battery? Oh, for a service?
Yeah.
It's just a minor service, possibly $4,600. I don't think y'all have anybody, but I have sent Jason someone that I could price for. They'll work on, I think they'll work on any brand of generator there.
Ms. Karen, when you get with Jason and have him follow up and get that information so we can know what to spend? I mean, if it's, if it's under $500, we don't have to say anything.
I'm having a hard time hearing what he's saying.
I'm sorry.
No, yeah, I'm not, I hear you.
I'm sorry. I don't want to get too loud.
So what I'm saying is that if it's under $500, if Jason will go ahead and get a price on it, if it's under $500, you can go ahead and have him kind of do it.
And then they also have a little review?
Generators.
Generators.
Put a generator for...
Well three and well one and three.
Now, the one at the train plant will be more. It's a lot larger. I'm, and I may be off base a little bit, but I know, I think last one I looked at was like $495. But we're on a contract.
That's something that we probably need to start getting better every, about every six months. Every year.
They sold, I believe it's same company I get to tell y'all. They sold us one where they come in and do a full service. This much later, they come in and check it. And then, you know, we, we, when I say we have a contract, we do one for the year. Next year, we'll do the same. And our big generator we have, Capito are coming to it, is 800.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Danny?
Even yours, it's made.
Can I, can your, your mix been approved?
On what?
Your mix just wasn't approved before.
Just let Jason know, he should have everything he needs to do, and it's in here. Yep.
Alright, uh, last thing, Michelle has something to say.
So, actually, I haven't heard yet. I'll check video. I haven't heard anything yet from Jason about the sewer line safety issue yet. But I wanted to bring this up because I think that we need to, um, first we need to put our insurance company on notice of a potential claim. Um, if there's no safety tank out there and we can't connect them back into our sewer system, we're gonna have to put them in a safety tank.
Did they come put you in a temporary tank?
I don't, I...
I don't think so.
I don't think so, but I don't know.
Okay.
I also need permission to contact the health department because even people that are, are going to get a safety tank, um, if they're... So basically, if you're within a certain distance of an operating sewer system, you have to connect to it. So, um, the, the health department has to approve if we're gonna allow them to have a safety tank there, so...
But do we need to find out first if they have one there? That's something you go ahead and do.
That, um, I was hoping I would have that information.
Even if, even if they have one, I can say this, and it's been so many years, we're going to get the inspection.
And we'll also have to have health department's permission to allow them to use that safety tank.
But if they have a safety tank, it is their responsibility.
No.
Unless if we're...
I, I think you get in some gray area because you've offered them sewer and they've paid their money and they've done everything. I mean, that's a legal question for her, but to me, it seems to go great.
I don't think it's quite that great. I think we, we connected them to our system, we have an obligation to keep them connected to our system or to, um... Provide them with the appropriate alternative that will be at our cost, right? Now, in turn, we'll seek to recover those damages against Camry and Columbia, but that's gonna take a while. And we have, it's the, to make help.
And that's a, that's a long process now, since the health department's done, they've done here a couple of years ago. You have to hire somebody to come in, the health department won't come in and do it anymore. If hire somebody, third party, come in, do it, you can get the permit in this place.
Okay, so you're asking for brief permission to...
To notify the insurance company of the potential of the claim. Um, I said it because if, if you have coverage for this and the cost of tank, see, you're deductible, we need to allow the insurance company to pay the same. I don't know what it costs to get in a safety tank, you say, but it's probably more than deductible. The, the other thing is, um, permission to contact the health department. So, once we're out there, that's what we need to do.
That's not something we need to vote on, we can just breathe and have Karen do that. I'm, I'm in agreement. You have anything else? Nobody that has anything for Mr. Sheil, uh, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.